El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The locations of the county facilities are the following. The Roden Bridge-Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice-of-the-peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners' Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD; or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court Meetings. Commissioners' Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Today is Monday, April 22, 2019. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Following, we have an invocation by Phyllis Peterson.
O source of all being, the citizens of El Paso call you by many names. Some call you God, others call you Yahweh, Allah, Brahman, goddess, Sanam, Tao, or Inner Light, and other names. These names represent the great traditions of the world joined here in our community. You who from ancient times has joined us in covenants, compacts, and constitutions as means by which we may join to co-create a humane, educated, and prosperous society. You, spirit of generations, bless all those here and everywhere serving the public in many ways. May our efforts here today be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all manners before us. May this courthouse become not merely a chamber of law, but a temple of justice. While working within a secular framework, may each of us always and everywhere sense the sacredness of liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Well, welcome to Commissioners' Court. Hope that you all had a great holiday weekend, and so we're ready to get moving. Caesar? Commissioner Robinson?
Absolutely.
Good morning. You all know me. My name is Commissioner Carl L. Robinson. Just want to make a few comments. There's been some question about my absence here. My absence, I can't go into details in that regard, but I want to dispel a couple rumors that's been floating around. Number one, I did not have a stroke. Number two, I did not have back surgery. Number three, I don't have cancer. And number three, I'm not dying. An unfortunate situation with hospitalization of some medical issues that arise that should not have, should have been taken care of, why didn't have this crisis. First judge and commissioners, county manager, I want to thank UMC because UMC saved me. If it was not for UMC, I would not, you would not, well, you'd probably see me at the grave site. But I'll give all praise and thanks to UMC for what they did for me. Currently, I am in a rehab facility. I'm going to rehab, so I just wanted to let you know that those are the reasons why I have not been here. Not because I didn't want to be here, not because I was playing in the sand or anything like that. Those of you who know, I served eight years on city council. I like to think that in eight years, I believe the max number of days I missed being on my job at the council meeting, if that many was 10. And those meetings I missed was because of going off Fisher Business to Austin, I had a death in my family, and I think I had one vacation. So I don't miss work. I don't like to miss work. Unfortunately, because of my situation, I'm here today against doctor's orders, but we made an agreement that I could come and spend as much, as much time as possible, not more than two hours. So I just want to let you know that I miss being here, and I'll be here when I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. Caesar?
Thank you, sir. Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4K. Are there any items that members of the court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners?
Move to approve?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
This brings us to item 5A Resolutions. Item 5A is to approve and adopt a resolution recognizing April 22, 2019, as Dr. Keith R. Johnson, M.D., Orthopedic Surgeon Date in El Paso County, Texas.
Good morning, Caesar. Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, because he is a surgeon that we were going to be honoring today, he was called out on an emergency surgery today, so I'm asking that we delete this item?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 5B, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the Veterans Food Drive.
Morning, Judge and Commissioners. I have the honor of reading this resolution. This was brought to me by the Veterans Writers Association, and they wanted to recognize some folks, and so we'll go ahead and read the resolution, and then we can hear from Mr. Mann. Whereas the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association is holding its sixth annual Veterans Food Drive from May 1, 2019, to June 15, 2019, and this remains one of the largest events in support of El Paso's veterans and their families, and have today collected over 500,000 pounds of food, clothing, and other items in support of our nation's veterans. And whereas El Paso County Clerk Dele Breones and her dedicated staff have joined with the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association again to help in this effort, and whereas El Paso County Judge Ricardo Samaniego has joined in direct support of El Paso's veterans by supporting the sixth annual Veterans Food Drive, pledging the support of the El Paso County Commissioners' Court, all El Paso County departments and personnel in full support of El Paso's veterans and their families. This is done in the sincerest dedication and appreciation of those who have defended our great nation, the United States of America. And whereas El Paso City Representative Henry Rivera and El Paso City Representative Cecily Zarraga have joined in full support of the sixth annual Veterans Food Drive and will, and will help coordinate the services of the city of El Paso, and whereas the gunslingers of the 3rd Battalion of the 133rd Field Artillery Regiment, Texas Army National Guard, commanded by Lieutenant Colonel Javier Rosales and 1st Sergeant Marquez Dominguez, have now joined in support of the sixth annual Veterans Food Drive and in full support of El Paso's veteran community. And whereas the El Paso County Commissioners' Court commends the El Paso Veterans and Writers Association and its founder and president Darryl Mann, United States Army Veteran, for their continued support of all present and future veterans, now therefore be it resolved by El Paso County Judge and Commissioners' Court that the period of May 1, 2019, to June 15, 2019, be dedicated to recognize and support El Paso County's veterans and their families. Sign this 22nd day of April, 2019, the Honorable County Commissioners' Court.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good morning. Well, six years we've been doing this together. It's had some very tremendous results because you all make, you all care a lot about the veterans, our community, all always there for us. We can't do this without you, and you show your support by helping us support our fellow veterans. I'll let each person after me introduce themselves, and they're all honored to be here, and we're very honored especially to have the Texas National Guard join us this year. The EPVRA is going to be partnering with them on some events, as we do with the 82nd Airborne and the San Luis Ares Veterans, so.
Lieutenant retired, Lieutenant Colonel retired, Robert Chisholm.
Marco Pastrana.
Sir Marquez Dominguez.
Thank you very much for bringing this resolution, Mr. Mann, and for what the EPVRA does for the community, and of course, you know, having, having this event six years in a row, and thanks to the judge, and for everybody else who's hopped on board to help make sure that it's a success. I think that anytime we can do something like this for our veterans, it's great to participate, so thank you all very much, and.
Thank you so much for your leadership. I know you're one of the first that I got to meet, and you told me about this from day one, so thank you for your leadership and for continuing, for your great team that you have with you today. Thank you.
Well, we thank you, Judge, for jumping into it with us, kind of blindsided, but we'll work with you. Commissioner Stoudt, thank you very much for drafting the resolution. Since you were on it, County Judge, we didn't want you to draft your own resolution, so we wanted some modesty here at the Commissioners' Court, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number 5C, approve and adopt a resolution recognizing the 29th Annual San Luis Ares Historic Conference.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I have the privilege of reading this resolution. Whereas the San Luis Ares Genealogy and Historical Society is presenting the 29th Annual San Luis Ares Historic Conference from April 25 to April 28 in San Luis Ares, Texas, and whereas the celebration commemorates the arrival of the Oñate Expedition to El Paso County in the late 16th century, and whereas Don Juan de Oñate was commissioned by King Philip II of Spain in 1595 to settle the New Mexico region in the name of the Spanish crown. In January 1595, Oñate embarked on that mission from Santa Barbara, New Mexico, leading a group of 400 men and their families across the Chihuahuan Desert, and whereas the group reached present day, the present-day site of San Luis Ares three months later, and on April 30, Oñate issued an official proclamation known as La Toma, officially claiming the land for Spain and marked the birth of the American Southwest. And whereas the conference, in conjunction with the 3rd Annual Rio Grande Festival, will include a reenactment of that historic. will include a reenactment of that historic event, as well as a special dinner with entertainment, family-friendly activities, and over 15 speakers from Mexico City to Santa Fe. And whereas the conference and festival offers local residents and visitors the opportunity to learn more about our region's unique history. Now therefore be it resolved by the El Paso County Commissioners Court. We recognize the 29th Annual San Luis Ario Historic Conference and its organizers for providing the citizens of El Paso County an opportunity to celebrate our history. Sign this 22nd day of April, 2019, by the honorable members of the Commissioners Court.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. And today we have Al Borrego and Ray Borrego, two gentlemen who have really dedicated themselves to preserving our county's history, particularly along the Mission Trail and our veterans' history, our proud veterans' history. These two gentlemen have dedicated a significant amount of their personal time and resources to preserving our history. So it's a pleasure to have you all here. Thank you for organizing this conference and for all you do to preserve the history of our county.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Perez. We appreciate all the work that you do and all of you Commissioners for supporting this. You've supported it for years. We appreciate it. It's good to see Commissioner Robinson back on here. And we appreciate, we invite you to come out here this coming weekend for the event. It's coming up to be a great event once again this year, and we appreciate what you're doing.
Al, thank you so much for everything you do. And it's the first seat of the county. It was in San Luis Ario. And Ray, for the veterans, two incredible things that happened there. And we'll try to support this weekend and we'll talk about what we could do to be there for this weekend, to make it whatever you want from us. So thank you, Al, and thank you, Ray, so much for this.
Item number 5D, Approve and Adopt a Resolution in Support of House Bill 3029 and the Designation of Spur 16 in El Paso County as the Henry Gallegos Senior Memorial Highway.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you. It gives me a lot of pride to be able to read this into the record for Commissioner Robinson. Thank you for allowing me to read this. Mr. Gallegos, I know that you've been waiting here. And what I'll do is I'll read this into the record, then we'd really appreciate some words from you.
First of all, I'm humbled and thank you very much.
Well, give me a second. Let me read this into the record. Whereas Henry Kiki Gallegos was born in Canotillo, Texas, January 14, 1930. And whereas he is a veteran that joined the U.S. Navy at the age of 17 and was stationed at the Naval Air Station Corpus Christi. And whereas Mr. Gallegos was an entrepreneur who started Henry's Seapool Service in 1953 and created custom-designed certified septic systems, semi-retiring in 1985, and continuing as a consultant for the company. And whereas he was a member of St. Matthew Catholic Parish, serving as an usher. And whereas Mr. Gallegos was a husband, father, grandfather, great-grandfather, friend, mentor, and inspiration to many in his company. And whereas upon enactment of House Bill 3029, the Texas Department of Transportation shall design and construct markers indicating the designation and erect a marker at each end of the highway and at appropriate intermediate sites along the highway. And whereas Texas Representative Joe Moody has filed House Bill 3029 to designate Spur 16 in El Paso County as the Henry Gallegos Senior Memorial Highway, sign this 22nd day of April by the Honorable Members of Commissioners Court, this day of the 22nd April.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Here? Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just overwhelmed. I want to be, I'm very humbled, the fact that you guys acknowledged my dad. Still there, fresh. But he was a good man. He gave his shirt off. He's back to anybody. Helped the community. Politically active in his ways. But I thank you very much, and I'm humbled by that.
Well, thank you for being here. And we're talking about your dad. Is that correct?
My dad. We're five kids. I'm the middle one, so out of five, I'm right in the middle of the way. But I was able to be here, and I want to thank you all for it very much.
Well, thank you for being here. And I know that Techstat will be notifying us when those markers are ready to be put in place. And hopefully we'll see you that day.
Definitely, definitely. Hopefully my kids will be here also, his grandsons. I will see you then.
Congratulations. That's a name will not be forgotten. Thank you.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six is Public Comment. And we don't have anybody signed up at the moment, Judge, for Public Comment.
Okay.
So no action on item number six, Public Comment. Which brings us to item number seven, County Administration. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 86th Legislative Session to include presenting information for the court's consideration, removing or including bills on the county's state legislative agenda, and supporting or opposing filed legislation, and take any action necessary on aforementioned items.
Good morning, Commissioners. Judge Ana Bolaca, Governmental Affairs Manager for the county. I have a very brief update for you today. I'm sure you all are following, but both HB 2 and SB 2 have kind of been paused in the Senate. We are expecting further movement hopefully this week, and we will be following that closely. I am also very pleased to report that one of our first bills has passed the House, HB 145. And I'd like to extend my gratitude to Commissioner Leon for all your leadership and work on this bill. He went and testified on our behalf. And so it is the first bill that we got passed, and it's now moving on to the Senate.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And really, just for total transparency, this was an item that was brought to me by Constable, one of the constables that we have here, Hector, that brought it to me. So I'll congratulate him sometime today. Thank you.
We also have Senate Bill 803 is moving on to the Senate Criminal Justice Committee. And further bills that have moved on to calendars, which are HB 156 and HB 1318. All of our county bills are moving forward and at a steady pace, so we'll be keeping you updated on that. If I have to provide a highlight for you later this week, I will be more than happy to do that. I come to you today bringing a couple of bills for opposition. The first bill is House Bill 1359. This bill basically allows state-licensed attorneys to come into county courthouses or jailhouses by just presenting their state bar ID and not necessarily a state license. They are asking that this bill be opposed because it kind of circumvents and causes some security issues. It would prevent them from having to go through metal detectors, for example. And so we feel that this bill would circumvent security at our county courthouse and jailhouses as well. The next couple of bills that I'm asking you to oppose today, sorry.
Commissioner Robinson, there's a question, sorry.
Who introduced that bill?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any idea who introduced that bill? Who's pushing it?
I don't. I'm sorry. I don't at the time. I do not. I can send that in an email soon after.
Probably from one of the other counties back east of Maryland.
I believe so, but I don't want to give you any assurance on that until I look that up.
Could you just? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you. The next two bills I'm bringing up to you today are, I have them in combination. It's HB 281 and Senate Bill 29. I brought to you in the past Senate Bill 702, which is very similar. And these bills are preventing counties from being able to lobby for themselves out with regards to legislation. So it is prohibiting counties from using public money for lobbying. So this basically takes away locals' officials' ability to communicate with the legislator on legislative issues and the ability of counties to be able to go and testify or push for certain legislation in the future. So that is the reason why I'm asking for you to vote in opposition of both HB 281 and Senate Bill 29.
So I just looked up Commissioner Robinson, HB 1359, the one regarding the attorney's being able to come to the courthouse. And the author is Representative Jean Wu. He's from the Houston area.
I figure. Judge, one thing is that the bill, two bills you just presented to us, this is another step where the state is trying to tell us what to do, trying to regulate or limit our ability to govern as though local people in the city, because it was a bill in the last session, I believe, where they were trying to limit cities' ability to govern and tax. And this is another step where the state is trying to say, you guys don't matter. You guys don't know what you're doing. We're Big Brother. We'll tell you what to do, and we'll tell you when you do it. So, no.
Yeah, it's a full-out attack on local control. And it's kind of interesting that they have no problem taking money from lobbyists from private interests, but then they're wanting to keep local taxing, local governments who are elected by the people. So you're basically, they're trying to stifle the people's voice, in my opinion. It's just, it's crazy that they're trying to do this, but I definitely agree. So I'll move to oppose all three of those bills.
Second?
HB 1359, HB 281, and SB 29.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Two final bills I bring to you today, I'm also asking that you oppose them. The first one is Senate Bill 2485. And it prohibits certain local regulation of certain employment benefits. In particular, this will impact our, the county's 381 contracting, 381 agreements. This will prohibit the county from being able to provide certain parameters to employers with regards to insurance, disability insurance, et cetera. So because of that, we're asking that you oppose Senate Bill 2485 and the impact it will have on the county's 381 agreements.
And this is actually a part of kind of a package of four bills that were broken up. I think it's 2485, 8687, and 88. They were broken. So there was an original bill that was titled SB 15 by Senator Creighton. And its purpose was to basically limit, you know, cities like Austin and San Antonio that pass these paid sick leave laws. But it came across some difficulties, some barriers because it had some provisions in there that would have allowed discrimination against LGBTQ communities. And so that bill basically died. But he ended up filing another, another four bills, including this one, that have to do with regulating how local governments provide benefits to the, if they're, they're trying to regulate the benefits that are being provided by employers to their employees and their cities. And so this is one of the ones that was broken out. And we asked the county attorney to look at this because it talks about our 381 agreements. And we have a number of 381 agreements, almost all of them, where we ask that they pay at least a median county wage or that they provide certain amount of benefits or a certain amount of, they pay for a certain percentage of the healthcare benefits and things like that. So this would, this would preclude us from being able to do that in the future. And I think really takes a lot of power out of our hands as a Commissioners Court when we're trying to decide what kind of companies we want to incentivize. If we want to incentivize higher-paying companies, this would keep us from being able to do that. So I definitely think that we need to oppose this one. And it's already out of the Senate. It's already on the House side. So we just need to make sure that our lobbyists get a card in at least when it comes through the committee on the House side. Sorry. Go ahead.
Appreciate the detail, but yes, exactly what he said. It just prohibits the county's ability to be able to work with employers and select the correct employers that will be of benefit to the citizens of the county. The next bill I bring to you for opposition is Senate Bill 1289. And this is relating to the assessments for water and energy improvements in certain municipalities and counties. This basically will eliminate the county's or local government's ability to choose who they work with with regards to the PACE administration. So it removes city and county control on programs where assessments and administration are actually done. It also kind of creates a monopoly on PACE. It'll choose a one administrator that'll work with all PACE programs throughout the state. And it limits the voice and the choice of the county to choose who and what administrator would work best for the county of El Paso. For these reasons, I am bringing to you, I ask for you to oppose both Senate Bill 2485 and Senate Bill 1281.
Move to deny.
And just for clarification as well, there were some other bills that were referenced by Commissioner Stout with regards to SB 2485. I would just add then, if it's the court's decision to oppose SB 2485, also to include language in that motion to include any other similar bills to SB 2485.
Yeah, I would definitely say the other three bills that are part of that package, for sure.
Okay.
But then I ask for opposition to Senate Bill 2485, Senate Bill 2486, 2487, and 2488.
And Ana, I think it would help us because it'll also be over on the House side. Just as you were framing it, as Christina framed it, any related bills that have the same impact?
To move, to oppose.
And then the second one, sorry, was SB 1281, right? Not 1289? Okay, because I thought I heard you say 89. So just to clarify that. Okay.
Second?
So, okay.
Your second, Commissioner Stout?
Second, Judge Samaniego, seconded it.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Ana, before you said, the last name that I was trying to get in my mind is Constable Hector Bernard. So I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number eight, Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Memorandum of Understanding with the Opportunity Center for the Homeless West Texas Nonprofit Developments for data entry services into the homeless management information system. Contract number 2019-0216.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, Irene Balenzuela, Community Services Department. This Memorandum of Understanding is an agreement that, asking the court's consideration to approve, in an effort to assist the Opportunity Center, upload some necessary data that is required into the community's homeless management information system. This data is vital to this community's effort to continue to report accurate and appropriate data to our major funder, which is the Housing and Urban Development, that helps us also gain other funding sources as well in an effort to assist them avoid some of the loss in federal funding to their programs. Proposing this Memorandum of Understanding to have some staff in my department go into the Opportunity Center and assist them in uploading this data. This is an original large upload of data that is recog- This is an original large upload of data that is required from their, uh, resource centers and their shelter programs, uh, in, into this HMIS system. Of note, I want, I want, uh, the commissioner's court to, um, understand that the Opportunity Center is our largest shelter in this community. They house at any given moment about 40% of our homeless population. They are a no-refusal shelter. They're open 24/7, 365 days of the year. And so if they don't comply with this data requirement, the loss of this funding could be hugely detrimental to our community. So we're asking for your consideration to approve this memorandum of understanding with, with the opportunity.
Irene or Joel, uh, tell me a little bit about, uh, your discussion with Ray. Uh, is there any opposition? Is he okay with it? It's just to, to, you know, get, get us back on track. Because I know he had some concerns, so whatever you can bring to us.
We bet. Uh, Joel Bishop, Executive Director of Justice and Community Services. Yeah, the, the, I know the Opportunity Center would prefer that in conjunction with this MOU, that there's a, that there's also an MOU between the county and the coalition regarding homelessness data, which we have, um, we have requested. We have a, a committee started to do that, that's working on that. Um, so there's still some progress that needs to be made there. That the advantage of this MOU is it allows us not only to help them get caught up with their data and to get them into compliance, um, but it also allows us to have access to their data and to be able to run that data for some of the, uh, transparency concerns that the Opportunity Center had with that. But it doesn't, we don't yet have, um, access to all of the data, the community data that's de-identified. And, and I think there's still work to do there, um, with, that, that'll be a separate MOU with, with, um, with the coalition. And I think that's where, where one of the concerns Ray has expressed, although he is okay with moving forward with this agreement. I think one of the things that, that we, we have to acknowledge is that this is not a long-term solution to the data issue. It's a short-term solution. We don't, we, we need to also find a way to help them stay in compliance, um, and, and the opportunity, we'll, we'll continue to work with Opportunity Center on that issue as well. So this is just one step of many steps more that need to be taken. We, we hope that this is a beneficial, um, step in the right direction.
No, I, I agree. I, I was just wondering if there had been a discussion with, with Ray. And I, I agree that, um, he has the majority of the data and the, the majority of the impact, uh, of, of funding if it's not accurate. So thank you for that. Commissioner Robinson.
Commissioner, it is essential that we support this. From the standpoint of, uh, we have, at the Opportunity Center, we have a lot of, the population is changing. We have more elderly people who are at the Opportunity Center in wheelchairs. Uh, they don't have a place to go. It assists our law enforcement because a lot of them are on the street. Rather than take them to jail, they'll take them to the Opportunity Center. So it helps us with our law enforcement effort where we don't have people in jail that don't need to be in jail. That to PD, Sheriff's Department, they take them to the Opportunity Center. We find people at night, uh, on the street in wheelchairs, no place to go, no family assistance. So it's essential that we support this.
I agree.
And Commissioner Robinson, just to, uh, uh, supplement your comments there. Um, we are, we've been actively running data on, on just how much the Opportunity Center is a, um, a service to the county, particularly our transition, jail transition re-entry. Uh, they seem to be the, the largest provider in the county by far for that. Also, we found, um, that the numbers are high with our Public Defender's Office and their mental health program. Um, it, over a hundred referrals, um, in the last year to the Opportunity Center from that program alone, let alone,
Right.
um, well, over, um, into the hundreds of people that transition from the jail into the Opportunity Center. So there's a significant, um, county interest in, in, in this project. So there'll be certainly more steps to be taken to, to help, um, ensure that we have the, the services we need from, from the Opportunity Center.
I agree. Thank you, Jill, for all your work.
Judge, one, one more comment.
Yeah, Commissioner Robinson.
In addition to that, we have a large population of homeless veterans that fall in category as well. And through the Opportunity Center, they have a, uh, VTLC, a Veterans Transition Living Center, where veterans who are out there, uh, and they help them get back in the population as far as, uh, with their issues with drugs, uh, get them cleaned up, you know, places to stay temporarily at the VTLC. And they work with them as far as employment, uh, and be successful citizen in our community.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Irene, is today your birthday, by any chance? Well, happy birthday. We don't have a big crowd today. And due to security reasons, we didn't let the mariachis come in, so I apologize. But, but happy birthday. Thank you for all you do for our community. Thank you so much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Approve and authorize the Community Services Department General Assistance Program to accept a grant awarded in the amount of $160,000 from the Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care Homeless Assistance Program. Uh, for coordinated entry, an in-kind match of $40,000 is required. The effective date of the agreement shall be the date of execution by HUD and it is the use of funds under this agreement that may begin. Contract number 2019 0247.
Morning again. For the record, Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. This is actually a continuation of a grant that we received last year. So this is year two of this grant from the Housing and Urban Development Department under their Continuum of Care Program Funds. And this is to fund, or continue to fund, rather, three, uh, intake assessment workers that are staffed in my department to do the homeless assessment, uh, intakes for our homeless population. So this is a system that is mandated by HUD. Every community provider that receives HUD funding has to, uh, abide by this coordinated entry process. And so every homeless, uh, or every person that's identified as a homeless person comes in through the coordinated entry system. My intake workers are the ones that take this assessment through this, uh, this tool. They're assessed about their, uh, the best housing program, uh, that fits their needs. And, and we make those referrals based on that assessment. So this continuation of this funding provides that, uh, funding to continue to fund these positions as well as other operational expenses such as equipment, um, mileage reimbursement, cell phones, things of that nature that they need to continue their work.
Move to approve.
Second.
Just a question, Irene, how, how does that relate back to what we just approved, item number eight? Is, is there some connectivity there?
Well, there, there, there is a connection right now, uh, where we're trying to also, uh, be placed in the Opportunity Center so that we can capture, uh, because they, they get the majority of our homeless population that goes in, in the middle of the night or throughout the night. And so, uh, we're, we're actually having our, some of our intake assessors there part of the time to collect the original, uh, assessment for, for a person that came in perhaps in the middle of the night. We're there in the morning to do that assessment first thing. And so it, it connects somewhat. We're taking in that original assessment and their needs to be able to work and, and provide that referral to provide that best housing linkage to them.
And you have space there and available?
Actually, yes. Um, the Ray and John were able to provide us an office space for us to, to be there. We're all actually going to use that space to act, to do the other HMIS data entry as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Irene. I'm sorry, now we can.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, Human Resources. Approve and authorize the creation of the County of El Paso's overpayments, underpayments, and repayment policy.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Melissa Carrio with Human Resources. This morning, I have the esteemed honor of being able to bring to you our first-ever overpayment policy. And just to give a little brief history on this, as you recall, December 10th of 2018, HR brought to the court's attention some errors that had occurred involving a little over 50 employees where it comes to overpayments. And so in that discussion, the court provided a few points of discussion for the future consideration. First being identify and create a fa- create a policy. Second being create procedures. Third, amend our financial policies. And fourth, making sure that we, uh, seek your annual authorization. Today, I'd like to bring the policy that has been vetted and discussed with department heads and elected officials for your consideration. And I do want to spend just a little bit of time covering those sections. Because this is a new policy and because it is very important and critical to our employees here at the county, I want to ensure that we have all points covered for everyone's understanding. This policy is a new policy. Initially, when we started working on it, we worked with the efforts towards an overpayment policy. But through hearing from our department heads and our elected officials, they wanted it to cover underpayments and what happened if we underpaid our employees as well. And so in the very introduction section, we make sure that we highlight in bold, if an employee is underpaid for any reason, HR will work together with the auditor's office to rectify that matter and pay that employee back on whatever was underpaid on the next pay period as soon as possible. In section two, we spell out what the responsibilities and authorities are involving departments and employees here at the county when overpayments and underpayments occur. First and foremost, HR and payroll are collectively responsible for ensuring that our employees are timely and accurately paid. And we start with that section to, to, to make sure the employees know that is our burden and, and we do our best to strive for that each and every day. Secondly, we also rely and need our departments, our path designees, to really look and watch for any salary changes, especially when those changes are made, departments have access to review those. So that's, that's something that we added to ask for their assistance. And finally, we close with the responsibility of our employees. If at any moment throughout the year they have access to ESS, that they can definitely check what their salary looks like. But again, we put that in A, B, C order, putting the priority on HR and payroll to ensure our employees are promptly and accurately paid. The next section is the area that honestly brought us here and said, you know what? We need a policy because in the past, what we did was rely on past practice and best practice. What we wanted to do was solidify what would that procedure look like in the event this occurred. And so section three is the overpayment procedure, which basically spells out what happens in the event an overpayment is discovered. HR bears that burden to report it in, immediately to payroll. And our auditor's office will verify that information. Thereafter, the department and the employee will be notified of any error in salary payments. That is an important stipulation because past practice did not previously allow for department heads to be notified. Only the employee was. And so we wanted to take that into consideration and change that at this point going forward. Employees and department heads will be notified at the exact same time via a notice of overpayment. In that notice of overpayment, if the employee feels that that is not justified, if there is a dispute for any reason, we provide instructions to them on what they can do to dispute the matter. And they have 10 days and we give them the information within that notice so that they know how to dispute that. If we move on to section E, it clearly outlines repayment options. Not only can we offer a one-time deduction from a subsequent paycheck, but we can also au- authorize personal payments from them. They can also utilize compensatory time and/or accrued vacation time. Or the most common is they can set up a payment plan with us so that they can pay that overpayment back. And we definitely wanted to provide a time limit on what that looked like. And so what we agreed to, and after vetting it with other departments, is that depending on how long we overpaid an employee, we wanted to give them an option at least up until that same amount of time to repay the county back. And so option number four has been clarified, and that's typically the one that we have seen employees use in the past. If we move on to the dispute section, under section four, this clearly identifies whose burden is it to place the matter before commissioner's court. And it reminds the employees and departments that the only body that is able to determine whether or not this dispute can be reconciled is our commissioner's court. And so in section four, you will see exactly what the process looks like. If an employee ever disputes that they need to pay back that overpayment, our office will coordinate and place an item on the agenda for commissioner's court. We will bring that information to you, along with any information that the employee has provided, and allow the court to make their decision. If the court continues to decide that a debt is owed to the county, we will work closely with the auditor's office so that we can begin our collection efforts. And then the policy closes on what happens with separating employees and again, the annual authorization. I'd like to remind the court that the annual authorization is very important because under Local Government Code, uh, 5, Section 155001, that statute is what requires commissioner's court to authorize a payroll deduction if the employee agrees to have their payroll check, uh, reduced in order to compensate for these overpayments. And so that is not on today's item. Today, we wanted to share in depth with you the policy. We wanted to see if you had any other questions. We wanted to let you know that we have honored your guidance from December, created policies, created procedures. Moving forward, there are two things that are still pending. One, we need your authorization, and I will bring that back next Monday in a consent item, asking for your authorization to allow for payroll deductions for overpayments. And secondly, I will work with Wally Hardgrove from the Budget, uh, depart fiscal, Budget and Fiscal Policy Department so that he can amend his financial policies that will justify exactly what this policy covers as well. Are there any questions for the, from the court?
Now, listen, the only question I would have is what if the, uh, dispute is among commissioners themselves or the judge? Is there anything that addresses that?
That's a good question. Uh, we did not cover that. We basically said an employee has the, the right to dispute their salary and that we would bring it to the court. I don't have Patsy in my office, who normally has guided me legally on this, so I don't know what options we have. But I imagine based on stat- statutory language, the court still bears that burden to address.
So if a member of the court, if, if, if it's for their specific wages, they would have to go through the salary grievance process. They would not be able to dispute that to the court. But if there was an overpayment, um, it, I, we would go, refer back to what was advertised and, um, published in the paper.
So either way, we're okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a different circumstance with elected officials, county-elected officials or public officials, rather, just for that fact that, um, we do have a specific statute that talks about what needs to be posted and noted for purposes of a specific, uh, elected official's salary. And then the process that they go through if they're disputing or they don't agree with the salary that was set by the commissioner's court. That's right. A different analysis.
Thank you, Christina.
Melissa, and the previous situation had a lot to do with you were changing from one system to the other?
Yes, sir. We had changed from one system to another. And unfortunately, it happened in a very busy time of year. It happened in October. And so as my office was processing these errors, due to manual errors that we made on behalf of HR, we processed incorrectly and we failed to check ourselves as quickly as we should have. The system was launched in October and we checked two pay periods in a row and everything was great. And for whatever reason, we stopped our efforts at that time. Had we continued, we would have noticed errors were actually made and we didn't catch them in time. The good thing is we caught them within the same fiscal year that they occurred and we did notify those employees. I did want to provide an update. We had 52 employees affected by these errors, if you will. And we have a little over 20 that have either paid in full or are making the payments. In light of this policy, it gives us the authority to continue notifying and working with those that have yet to start paying back. And there's about 28 to 29 employees that we're working on in that area. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Judge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samaniego.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Melissa.
Item number 11. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the inter-local cooperative agreement between Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and El Paso County for partnership services affecting the citizens of El Paso County. This agreement is effective upon the date of signature and will automatically renew annually. Contract number 2019 0022.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, LC DHRO for the HR office. Um, this item, um, the purpose of this agreement with agriculture is to create a continuity between the county and AgriLife's commitment of a partnership, which overall impacts the education and community development amongst other agriculture services to the citizens of the county. The agreement is for the county to continue to provide support for personnel services to, um, AgriLife for their continued supportive service programs such as the Education and Agriculture, Family and Consumer Sciences, 4H, Youth Development, and Community Development. The HR department is seeking your approval of this agreement between the County of El Paso and AgriLife. Do you have any questions for us?
Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a couple of members here from AgriLife. Um, I believe you've met them, but because we do have a new court, I just wanted to introduce them again. This is Denise, who is, uh, the director over that section.
Denise Rodriguez, County Extension Director for El Paso County. Commissioners, Judge, thank you for your support of our programs. And this morning, I'd like to take an opportunity
And this morning, I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce you all to our new 4-H Youth and Development Agent, Miss Chanel Sevila. She's been on the job for about seven months. She's hit the ground running, and I'd like to please, like to introduce her to the court and welcome her aboard to our county.
Well, welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to introduce them.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So no further questions?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Elsie, thank you so much, Denise. Thank you. Welcome.
Item Number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve one full-time regular HR specialist position for the Human Resources Department, which will be reimbursed 100%. Reimbursement funding is available in IS Health/Health Dental Claims. If approved, funding will be transferred from General Fund G Admin Contingency Personnel to the necessary General Fund HR Risk Pool Salary and Fringe Accounts.
Good morning again, Judge and Commissioners. Melissa Carrillo with Human Resources. I wanted to first introduce this item. As you know, we work with departments, and we definitely work with them to say when you're going to add on new positions, we do so during budget year. This is an exception to that, being that when we recently went out for an RFP for our third-party administrator with health insurance, this is something that they offered as part of that proposal. The position comes with the proposal. It's 100% covered by the TPA that has been awarded this project. And I want to turn it over to Veda Niseakosta, who's our HR Benefit Supervisor, to share a little bit more about that. But I wanted to introduce with the caveat that normally, we wouldn't come to you in the middle of a year for a new position, but it is something that the funds are available, completely reimbursable, and they are being offered as part of that negotiation with our TPA that was recently awarded.
Thank you, Melissa.
With that, I'll introduce Ms. Veda Niseakosta.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Veda Niseakosta with the Human Resources Department. The purpose of today's agenda item is to seek a mid-year approval from Commissioners Court for a full-time HR specialist position assigned to our county's wellness program. On December 3, 2018, Commissioners Court approved the award for an RFP for a third-party administrator for the administration of the county's medical and dental plan. This award contains several financial incentives, including $150,000 towards a hiring of an HR specialist position to the Wellness Section for the first three years of the contract. The contract is for three years with potential three one-year extensions. The county has seen a 60% increase in participation to the wellness program, and hiring this position will help meet the needs of the employees without affecting general fund monies. We are requesting for the court to approve the hire of one full-time HR specialist position using funds generated through the county's risk pool account. This position is reimbursed 100% by the third-party administrator at a life insurance. Does the court have any questions?
Do you have any more of these opportunities to come our way? No, and thank you, because, you know, just the wellness programs and how they will reflect immensely on what we spend on healthcare. This is just a really nice opportunity to have both, both the reimbursement, but also the impact it'll have on our healthcare program.
Yes. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Item Number 13, Purchasing. Award of Bid 19013, As-Needed Base Course Material for the County of El Paso to Waco Quarry Incorporated, doing business as MTI Materials of El Paso, Texas and Mini Concrete Materials of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on April 15, 2019. Funding is available in Special Revenue, Road and Bridge, Road Resurfacing.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we are requesting award to two vendors. The awards are based on geographic locations, so it was the lowest responsive responsible bid based on competition. And this is one of four items today before you for the paving program that will begin soon.
Motion to approve?
I have a question. Is quarry typically spelled with two Rs or one? Is the name of the country, the company with one Rs, one R or two?
It does look like a spelling error.
Okay, just want to make sure. If there's another company with two Rs, and we want to make sure it's the right company.
We got the right one.
Waco Quarry of El Paso, for the record.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Number 14. Award of Bid 19014, As-Needed Paving Emulsion Material for the County of El Paso to Holly Frontier Refining and Marketing LLC of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Purchasing approved on April 17, 2019. Funding is available in Special Revenue, Road and Bridge, Road Resurfacing.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. This item, we attempted a sealed bid and only received one response. We did the normal process where we go and query, and some said they did not supply it. Now, because there was a significant price increase, it's a little less than 30% over last year's cost, we had the department review it and look and see if there was anything going on in the market. And we do have the department on file in writing stating that this is actually acceptable based on what crude oil is doing, and crude oil drives this specific commodity. I'd like to go ahead and say that we're improving the process on what we will do coming forward when there is only one bid, because there is significant concern when you only get one bid, even though it was open for competition. Sometimes the reasons vendors come back and tell us they didn't bid may or may not be the real reasons they did or did not bid. And so it becomes incumbent on the county to check the pricing and make sure that it's in line either with CPI or with other market factors. That being the case, I didn't have the form ready for this award, but in the future, whenever you see this situation, you're also going to have a form that will be signed by the department where we talk about some of the economic drivers for these types of situations so that the court can be comfortable that the pricing has been reviewed.
Commissioner Leon?
Deborah, I appreciate what you just said, but this of all of them caught my eye. Number one, because it's out of town, it's out of Albuquerque, and we're looking at 2,500 tons. And yet, I know that we only had one bidder, but I'm very concerned about that because of the transportation costs. Unless they have a site in El Paso, it just, I can't believe this is a good deal for the county, knowing that they're adding transportation costs to get all that tonnage to us. I just want to hear your opinion on that.
Well, I'm speaking to you as the purchasing agent, and I want to have awareness of the fact that this is also timed into the paving program. Can I tell you that this is absolutely the best deal for the county? No. The best deal for the county would be to have a local vendor come out of the woodwork and have bid on this. However, in this case, with the advertisements and the contacted vendors that have in prior years come to the table, we did not get the response. So technically, this was competitively bid with a single response, not the most optimal situation.
And your recommendation is, your recommendation is that we do in fact approve it?
I wish Public Works were here because, is there anybody here from Public? Perfect. Yes, we can set this to the side and then have that discussion because I do believe there are some situations that if we address it now, we'll kind of know how to go going forward. Maybe it shouldn't have gotten to the award stage. Maybe it should have been closed out and rebid at that point with more of a mind towards finding out specifically if we can bring local vendors to the table. But in effect, I would say yes, because it was competitively bid. Your concerns are valid, though. Out of town, transportation, they built it into their cost, but without competition, we don't know how much of that was built into the cost.
And Deborah, at this point, what's our limitations? Can we rebid? Can we?
Commissioners Court by statute always has the right to reject all and rebid, but I do not know how that will affect the timing.
There is a timing concern on our paving season. We only have a certain period of time to pave every year. But let me find out. I'm also looking out how this compares to past years and numbers of bidders.
Furney said that this is about 30% more, give or take, than in prior years, but he understands that with the crude oil, it doesn't look really out of line. I have that in writing. In the future, these will come to forms so you can actually see these conversations.
Okay, so we can go to 15 and wait for response?
Judge, before, you know, it does look like in 2018, there was also only one bid for this item, and then there were two bids in 2017. So, you know, I don't know what, you know, what the issue is here.
Was that bid local, Commissioner?
I'm not sure. I just have the number of bidders for, that there was one last year in 2018, and then there were two in 2017.
My staff is watching right now, so I imagine that as we wait on and come back to this, I'll have an answer on that as to whether there were local bidders in the past.
Okay, thank you.
And last year, we were awarded to Holly as well.
What was?
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Robinson?
Is there a uniqueness to the material from the other providers that they don't have, so they'll buy? Maybe that's a question.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's probably a question for an emulsion expert.
Mr. Perez just said that we awarded to the same company last year. Now, my thought, I'm just questioning if there's a uniqueness to maybe that's why the other guy did not bid on it.
And, you know, one of the things that I see, 30% of $1.4 million, that's a lot of money. So I'm glad we're postponing for a little bit, and hopefully, we'll have some answers in a while.
Thank you for requesting that, Commissioner. Sessa?
Yes, sir. Item Number 15. Award of Bid 19015, Up to 20,000 Tons of Paving Rock Grade F and Up to 12,000 Tons of Paving Rock Grade C for the County of El Paso to Waco Quarry Incorporated, doing business as MTI Materials of El Paso, Texas, in the amount of $472,000. Purchasing approved on April 15, 2019. Funding is available in Special Revenue, Road and Bridge, Road Resurfacing.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, quarry was spelled correctly, so I think we're good. This is sealed bid based on competitive bidding, and it is also part of the 2019 paving program, and we're requesting approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Number 16. Award of Bid 19016, County's 2019 Road and Bridge Paving Project to Allied Paving of El Paso, Texas. Purchasing approved on April 15, 2019. Funds are available in Special Revenue, Road and Bridge, Road Resurfacing.
Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we're again dealing with a sealed bid. We're the lowest responsive responsible vendor. We had four responses, and the recommended award is to an El Paso firm.
How much?
How much?
One bid?
Oh, the total is going to be $2,555,000.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Estimated total.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, Deborah, we'll go to, we'll continue, and then as you have the information, just come back up and.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah.
Item Number 17, Budget and Finance. Approve Amendment Number 28 to the County of El Paso's 2018-2019 Operating Budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by $10,000, thus increasing the overall budget
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Are there any questions on this week's amendment?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss Items 18A through 18C pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 and 551.087. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabens Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabens Street in Fabens, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioner's Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Going back to item number 14, award of bid 19014, as-needed paving emulsion material for the County of El Paso to Holly Frontier Refining and Marketing LLC of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Purchasing approved on April 17, 2019. Funding is available in special revenue, road and bridge, road resurfacing.
I apologize. Okay, so I want to clarify a couple of things on this item. So, the price per pound last year was $1.92. This year it's $2.35. That is a 22.5% price increase. We are checking around to see what others are paying for this. When you look at it at the $2.35 per pound, I looked up, let's see, I'm sorry, I think it was Brazoria, and they're paying between $2.29 to $2.39 per pound. So it doesn't seem like it's far off. And I looked up how our specs compare to others. They seem very similar to me. I do know there's been some price changes in crude oil, but if you'd like for us to postpone one week and bring back, I will tell you rebidding this I do believe would interfere with our paving season. But if you'd like us to bring back more comparison information, we'd be glad to do that if you want to postpone one week.
And I do have the information that 2017, Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent. In 2017, there were two bidders. One was an El Paso bidder, one was Holly. The emulsion we use could not be bid on by the El Paso bidder. Holly's the only one that bids on the emulsion that we use. And that could explain the results every year as we go back. And so when Commissioner Robinson asked, "Is there something special about the emulsion?" It's the emulsion that we use to enhance the paving program and get the better results. Public Works may be able to speak more to the emulsion itself. The overall price, I overestimated, it was 22.5, is the price increase over 2018. We're dealing by the ton, we're dealing with $103 per ton increase. Now, the one thing that you guys have not been used to seeing in the past, and it's something that I changed and I should have probably given better warning to the court, is in the awards that come forward, I notice that we're giving you unit pricing and how much, but we're not really extending it out in a lot of cases to give you the full picture of what you're actually approving. And so in this case, unlike last year, or unlike prior years, we actually did the per-ton pricing times all the tons and put it out. And that does look like a bigger number. Transportation is included and the price increase is 22.5. I hope that helps.
So your recommendation, as we stand right now, is accepted?
My recommendation, yes. And it's because we have a whole paving program tied to this. If there are other ideas that we can come up with between now and next year to figure out, even if it's just looking at different types of emulsion that possibly could be used, but I think that train's already left the station. They're using a certain type of emulsion to do the roads and they're getting good results.
I see no benefit in postponing it for one week if we're going to be, I mean, these are the numbers.
They are. And if we postpone for one week only to end up going out for bid, we lose probably about 12 more weeks with emulsion.
Yeah, that's true.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838; The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835; And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938. Don't wait in line, pay online! Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm To make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor, felony, and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas". Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the Purchasing Department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for this specialty court, the statutory criteria includes: Be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard; And suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD; Or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119 or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the Purchasing Department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the Purchasing Department at telephone number 915-546-2048. Commissioners Court has reconvened into regular open session. Going back to item #14, award of bid 19014, as needed paving emulsion material for the County of El Paso to Holly Frontier Refining and Marketing LLC of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Purchasing approved on April 17, 2019. Funding is available in special revenue, road and bridge, road resurfacing.
I apologize. Okay, so I want to clarify a couple things on this item. So, the price per pound last year was $1.92. This year it's $2.35. That is a 22.5% price increase. We are checking around to see what others are paying for this. When you look at it at the $2.35 per pound, I looked up, let's see, I'm sorry, I think it was Brazoria, and they're paying between $2.29 to $2.39 per pound. So it doesn't seem like it's far off. And I looked up how our specs compare to others. They seem very similar to me. I do know there's been some price changes in oil, crude oil. But if you'd like for us to postpone one week and bring back, I will tell you rebidding this, I do believe would interfere with our paving season. But if you'd like us to bring back more comparison information, we'd be glad to do that if you want to postpone one week.
And I do have the information that I, 2017, Deborah Crejo, County Purchasing Agent, in 2017, there were two bidders. One was an El Paso bidder, one was Holly. The emulsion we use could not be bid on by the El Paso bidder. Holly's the only one that bids on the emulsion that we use. And that could explain the results every year as we go back. And so when Commissioner Robinson asked, "Is there something special about the emulsion?" It's the emulsion that we use to enhance the paving program and get the bidder results. Public Works may be able to speak more to the emulsion itself. The overall price, I overestimated, it was 22.5 is the price increase over 2018. We're dealing by the ton, we're dealing with $103 per ton increase. Now, the one thing that you guys have not been used to seeing in the past, and it's something that I changed and I should have probably given better warning to the court, is in the awards that come forward, I notice that we're giving you unit pricing and how much, but we're not really extending it out in a lot of cases to give you the full picture of what you're actually approving. And so in this case, unlike last year, or unlike prior years, we actually did the per ton pricing times all the tons and put it out. And that does look like a bigger number. Transportation is included and the price increase is 22.5. I hope that helps.
So your recommendation, as we stand right now, is accepted?
My recommendation, yes. And it's because we have a whole paving program tied to this. If there are other ideas that we can come up with between now and next year to figure out, even if it's just looking at different types of emulsion that possibly could be used. But I think that, I think that train's already left the station. They're using a certain type of emulsion to do the roads and they're getting good results.
I see no benefit in postponing it for one week if we're going to be, I mean, these are the numbers.
They are. And if we postpone for one week only to end up going out for bid, we lose probably about 12 more weeks with emulsion.
Yeah, that's too much. Judge, aren't you an emulsion guy?
Are you an emulsion?
Well, what I was going to suggest is-
Are you emotional right now?
Emotional about the emulsion. No, what I was going to suggest is obviously, you know, let's not postpone, but that you get, you know, a little bit more with our vendors and find out, you know, if they have, sometimes if they know there's a need for it, they might like the business. You know, they might get involved in the business. So I'm sort of curious now as to why in El Paso, if it's something that's, you know, you could see by the cost that it'd be worth the business. So if you could just do a little bit more of looking at, like you said, maybe different types of emulsion that might be more effective in curing.
I can't look at the different types of emulsion, but you know what? I think you're hitting on something great. What I can do is go to the current vendors that are sitting in El Paso and ask them specifically, what would it take to get them to start supplying this? And then I can share those results with the court. May be beneficial, may not, we may be back at square one. But I don't think it'd be a wasted effort if you think that's-
No, and sometimes in my experience, they're going to have huge projects and they're not interested on something that's not going to make them a lot of money. But I think if we have a discussion about what the potential is with our county, they might look at it a little different.
Yes, and-
Timing is sometimes the issue more than-
It is, we are, we have been aware over the last year and a half or so that we're competing with other construction projects in the area. And sometimes we don't come out as the most attractive bid that they want to concentrate on. And that's okay too, but I'm happy to do that because I think that will probably offer a lot of insight, maybe in on the other paving issues as well.
I agree.
Then having heard what I heard just now, I'll make a motion to award the bid.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stow.
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson is absent. Judge Samanigo.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That item, Judge, is in our agenda.
Is this a personal best? 11:32, please note.
This concludes today's meeting at 11:33 a.m.